In between those two.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order here. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a short one tonight, so let's jump right in. Move on to item two, approval of the minutes. I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes of the regular city council meeting on May nine, 2023. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Moving on to item four, consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. Item five, visitors and presentations. Public Works Week proclamation. I have the good privilege to read a proclamation celebrating all the good work that the folks at Public Works do. As soon as I pull it up. Right, I'll use the official copy. All right. Whereas, Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of White Bear Lake. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas, it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in White Bear Lake to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, be it resolved that the White Bear Lake City Council hereby designates the week of May twenty-one through twenty-four, 2023, as Public Works Week in White Bear Lake, and urges citizens to enjoy, to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution that they make in protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. And with that, I will just add, we have folks from Public Works here. I want to thank you and your staff for all that you do. You have all the nitty-gritty work that often gets forgotten about, but is essential to everything we do, from driving on roads that don't have potholes to the clean water coming out. So on behalf of the council, we extend our thank you, and we're happy to recognize this as Public Works Week in White Bear Lake. So thank you very much. All right. All right, we only really have one other thing on the agenda tonight. Item five B, the 2022 financial audit. Ms. Kinzvater?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have Justin Nilson with us. He is the senior manager with our auditing firm, Abdo. He's here to present the results of our 2022 annual audit. And so he'll do a presentation. He'll answer his questions at the end. Staff recommends the city council adopt the attached resolution accepting the 2022 annual financial report. So with that, I'll let Mr. Nilson get up and give his presentation.
Welcome.
All right, thanks for having me. I'm looking for the same level of applause after my presentation. I'm a lot shorter, much better looking. I don't know about my, my materials and how I will do, but you are probably used to Mr. Faltesek. He is out of town, so you get me this evening. So I will just get started by just saying a quick thank you to the council for having us as your audit firm. We do appreciate that. I'd also like to say thank you to Kerry and the finance team for all their hard work putting together the financial information. Obviously, we couldn't do our work without them, so thank you to them as well. So I will just go on to the next slide and go on to the brief introduction. I'll go over the audit opinion and responsibility of us as an audit firm. I will then go over the general fund results, other governmental funds, enterprise funds, as well as internal service funds. And I will close with some key performance indicators comparing the city to others in the state of Minnesota and the county. So our audit results for 2022. So we did issue a clean, unmodified audit opinion, which is the opinion that the city is looking for in 2022, so that's a positive thing there. How we arrived at our opinion is we did come on site and test a number of transactions around paying of bills, paying of employees, looking at the property taxes, grants, looking at what the council gets to make decisions, et cetera. So we don't have any internal control-related findings that we are reporting, so I think that's also positive this evening. The second thing we did as part of our audit is tested Minnesota legal compliance and state statute. The Office of the State Auditor does put guides on their website that we are required to test as part of our audit. A couple of examples of those things would be timely payment of claims and lack of conflicts of interest with anybody in the city. So again, no legal compliance finding, no findings noted for 2022, so I think that's also positive. The third thing that we did as part of our audit this year is we did test, do a single audit, which is, was required due to federal expenditures over $750,000, mainly due to the ARPA funds. So as part of our single audit, we also noted no non-compliance issues related to that program. So overall, a really clean audit, no findings to report in 2022. So slide four, we'll get into some of the results, looking at the general fund. So on the screen, we do see three different lines. I suppose one is a bar. The city fund balance, the city's budget, as well as the city's fund balance policy, which is a range of thirty-five to fifty percent. So again, we do offset one year, just to compare reserves for the future. So we do see, again, that steady increase in the city's general fund budget, as well as a good trend in the right direction of that general fund balance, up to about fifty-one percent. So I think overall, really positive. And again, at the top of that fund balance policy. So we look at just maybe on the next slide, how we get to that in 2022. So we look at the overall budget to actual. So the city did have pretty much a balanced budget, budgeting for a minor increase in the general fund. Our actual results did come in more favorable, where the general fund did increase about 758,000. So a couple of key reasons for that, looking at the revenues, that was over budget, about 218,000. Obviously, a lot of transactions going into that 12.5 million. A couple of things that did stick out were some of the charges for services and permits over budget, offset a little bit by, you know, under budget and some of the interest on investments due to some of the market value, which I believe has been discussed. So again, some of that expenditures as well were under budget by about 500,000. Again, I think pretty much every department in my prep was under budget, so I think overall, good fiscal management, good spending there. I think public safety might have been the biggest, mainly probably due to some turnover. So overall, a really good year for the general fund increase in that fund balance, $750,000 approximately. So if we flip to the next slide, we just look at the general fund revenues. What we do is we put together, we'll see on the next slide, the general fund expenditures as well. Three-year comparison of some of the major categories within the general fund. So the first one, again, I think the thing that sticks out is, you know, with, with high grants and just some of the other related revenue with transfers and some of those other things, the biggest, the biggest bars do tend to be those taxes, which is something to be aware of. Obviously, that is the biggest thing that's made, made up there. And again, I don't think anything sticks out significantly, maybe, other than just the higher intergovernmental revenue for some of the cares back in 2020. So you can flip to the general fund expenditures. Again, I think this one pretty consistent as well. I think everything looks pretty good. Just obviously, the one thing, again, sticks out here is just the high level of public safety as compared to that general fund in comparison to the others, but otherwise, nothing too significant to point out there. Excuse me, you can flip to the next slide. All right, so the next one looks at the special revenue fund. So getting away from the general fund a little bit, we do put a chart together here to show the special revenue funds. Again, there's about seven of them, the sports center forfeiture, et cetera. And just looking at some of the major variances this year, looking at the EDA as a decrease within budget of about 300,000, so I think nothing too unforeseen there, kind of right in line with what the budget was looking at. I think the only other thing to point out here is we do see the American Rescue Plan Fund with basically zero balances over the past three years. And just to note that there is cash or unavailable revenue, or excuse me, unearned revenue that will be used in the future years of about $900,000 there, even though that balance is zero. It's an accounting issue where, again, we do have cash of about 900,000 there that is to be spent into 2023 and 24. So we can flip to the next slide and just look at where those resources are kept, I guess, just as far as their fund balance. We do note a small portion is non-spendable and restricted. And again, I think that that non-spendable really should be hidden, but looking at the ma, the majority of those resources and those funds as being committed for those individual funds and not really available for use in anything other than those specific funds. So we flip and change to the capital project funds. Again, this is a big portion of where the city's funds are kept. But again, I think we can see here, I think that overall, things are pretty strong with reserves for the future. I think the one thing that, again, sticks out here is the municipal building did go up about, you know, five and a half million. I think it's important to note that that obviously is related to unspent proceeds, so more of a timing thing in 2023. Those proceeds will be spent, and the expectation is that fund will go back to, I suppose, similar to what it was in twenty-one and, excuse me, 2020 and 2021. So overall, I think really positive there. So if we flip to the next slide and just look at where those resources are, again, a majority of those resources are also committed, but there are also some assigned resources in some of those other funds as well. To the next slide and just look at the, the city's debt service fund. So again, this would be non-enterprise-related debt service. So again, and I'm not going to spend too much time on this one. I think this is just good information. We just show the total assets, remaining bonds or loans outstanding, the maturity date. And if we flip to the next slide, just looking at overall what that chart looks like in the next ten years for the future principal and interest payments, kind of wavering between that two and 2.5 million range for future principal and interest payments in those governmental bonds. All right, so we switch gears a little bit. We'll get into the enterprise funds. So we have a number of charts related to the enterprise funds. There's going to be two for each. The first chart, we'll start with the water fund again. Our charts, again, I'll, I'll mention just real quick, there's two charts. One is meant to be an operational chart, looking at operating receipts in comparison to dispersments and debt payments. The second will be a comparison of the, the cash balance and, and present kind of a minimum target based on the funds, you know, individual needs and uses. So as we look at the water fund, again, I think overall positive results, where we do see that operating receipts or that orange bar in excess of the operating dispersments and debt payments. So if we flip to the next slide, we do see a really positive trend in the right direction for that water fund and the related cash balances, and just a little bit over the, the minimum targets there. Again, we do note some unspent proceeds there for future use on projects as well. So next is the sewer fund. Again, I think this one does not have, excuse me, the sewer fund does not have debt, so we don't show that black bar, but overall, I think really consistent, good results for the sewer fund over the past four years, as that operating receipts line does exceed those dispersments. So if we flip to the next slide, again, I think it kind of is reflected in that nice chart there, where we do see a positive trend in the right direction of that sewer fund's cash balance over the past four years. The next would be the city's refuse fund. So again, we, we're going to see the same trends every time. I'm going to probably say it every time. And again, I think we see here, overall, operating receipts consistent to those dispersments. So if you flip to the next slide, I think overall, this one also shows pretty positive, consistent results. Again, a little less need for future reserves with future capital or anything other than that in there. So we do drop that minimum target a little bit, and that balance is kind of staying pretty consistent to where that was over the past couple of years. Next would be the ambulance fund. Again, I think this one, that, that bar really consistent overall to the expenditures, so I think something to, to be considered of in the future. I think the margin's a little tighter there in that fund. As we flip to the next one, I think that there is a, a little bit of an increase in the, the cash balance above that minimum target balance of 25% of the operations. I think that's positive. For that fund, I think a big reason for that was some of the, the grant funding and pushing some of the, the ARPA funding there. Can flip next to the license bureau. Again, I think this one, again, as we do see, again, those operating dispersments kind of exceeding those operating receipts, probably not a surprise to the people in the room. But if we flip to the next chart there, I think we do see kind of that trend and just the impact of some of those things, and just obviously noting that that will be something to continue, continue to discuss in future years, that those costs do kind of exceed those receipts. All right, we're on to the last one, Pioneer Manor, as we see the same chart, looking at the cash flows from operations. We see pretty consistent, I think, a little bit on the higher side for dispersments and debt payments in 2022. But if we flip to the next slide, again, I think we can see pretty positive results and overall cash balance is really consistent, sticking around that 300,000 mark and kind of above that minimum target operating costs in all four years. All right, the last one, I'm going to go over to the similar charts, as we do put together a chart similar for the internal service funds, looking at, you know, what a good minimum is there as well, and combining the insurance and employee expense fund. We see pretty positive and good, good results here, some good reserves on hand, about 5.3 million there. Again, a little bit above that minimum target, but I think overall, you know, obviously with, with employee costs going up, I think that's some, some good, good results there for those. Go ahead. You can actually go to the next one. Sorry, I forgot to prompt you. All right, so to tie it all together, we do put together a cash and investment balances, and we show where those funds are made up. A big portion of those, as I mentioned previously, would be in those capital funds, but again, I think a good solid split between the enterprise funds, the general fund, capital funds, special revenue, internal service, et cetera. So I think, again, as I mentioned also, just to reiterate here, too, a big jump in that cash balance, mainly related to some of those unspent proceeds that will be used or are being used currently for some projects. All right, I will go next into the key performance indicators. Again, I'll just get some housekeeping. The class-two cities would be 20 to 100,000 in population, which would include all in the state of Minnesota. Cities in Ramsey County is self-explanatory, and 20 to 30,000 in population, I believe, is also the same. So as we look at, they're going to have two charts with taxes, two with debt, and we're going to close with some operational ones. But looking at the first, at the tax rate, I think we can see overall, the city's tax rate is really strong in comparison with those in the peer group, specifically with those, you know, in the class-two cities. I think really positive and good results for the city there. So if we flip to the next slide, and just look at, you know, a different ratio can, could be the same, could be very different. Obviously, we do just divide the overall taxes in total, divided by the number of residents within the city. So I think this one also is a good ratio for the city, showing on the lower side in comparison to those class cities and other comparisons. So the next one is the debt, as we look at long-term debt per capita. Again, this one, I think, again, compares pretty favorably. I'm not entirely sure what happened there with the 20 to 30 K in population. I don't think there's that many cities that are in that range in the state of Minnesota, so there could have been a big drop in one direction from one city or another, but I think overall, still a strong comparison with those cities. And again, I think, obviously, bigger cities having bigger, bigger debt loads is pretty normal. Next slide looks at the debt service expenditures as a percentage of current expenditures. So this one would exclude enterprise funds, so we just look at some of those, those governmental debts, and just look at what those, that percentage is. I think this one also shows really consistent and good results to others in the member cities as well. A little bit on, a little bit of an increase over the past few years, but again, I think well in line with those, you know, those member cities and some of those other ratios. All right, so the last two, look at the current expenditures and capital expenditures per capita. And again, I think, to be a broken record, I think the city of White Bear Lake does compare really favorably, looking at those ratios there, knowing that the, you know, the operational per resident is about $611 in comparison to some, some of those others in the class-two cities closer to 700. So I think that's really positive. And if we flip to the last one, I think this one is a little bit more inconsistent, just generally, obviously, capital is a little bit all over the board with, with cities depending on need and what they're doing. But again, I think overall, when we mash all the numbers together, I think it all, all looks pretty good for the city as well. So with that, I've reached the end of my presentation. Applause, please. No. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, do we have any questions for the auditors? Well, people, people ponder that. I'll just thank you for the report and compliment Ms. Kinzvater for another good year of keeping the books in order. We've got a clean opinion, which is what we always want to see, so there was nothing glaring. And I know someone from your office contacted me a month or two ago and asked if I had any concerns, and I said no, so that was good. That was good. So thank you very much for everything you do in the finance department. Questions for the auditor? Seeing none, we have a resolution before us approving the, accepting the 2020, 2022 annual comprehensive financial report for the city of White Bear Lake. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution passes. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for having me. Good luck the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, items six through nine, we have nothing scheduled. Brings us to item 10, communications from the city manager. Ms. Crawford, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one quick update, as we did announce last week, Chief Swanson has submitted her notice of retirement in just three short months. So we did, which I'm thankful for the time that she has given, it could have been a couple of weeks. So we anticipate going out for, beginning the recruitment process very soon, and looking to hopefully have a replacement onboard by early September. That does still have to be blessed by the Civil Service Commission, which they meet on Friday. But, and, so right now, we're in the process of reviewing the job description and creating the position profile, and I'm meeting with all of the, the police department employees to get feedback from them. So I just thought I would, I'd share an update on that, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Crawford? House Member Jones.
Can I just add a thank you to Ms. Crawford for letting me play with fire trucks this last weekend? And kudos to Assistant Chiefs and Police Department and everybody. We took the two old fire trucks and put them in, restaged a 1933 photograph, and then brought the fire, had drone going, and we then brought out the newest vehicle that we had and put it side by side with the old of France, and got some really cool shots to help celebrate the 135th anniversary of a fire department this year. So thank you. And it was just an awesome day. It was just unbelievable.
They didn't let you drive anything, did they?
No, of course not. I couldn't, I couldn't even touch it, so I was barely able to look.
Very good. Anything else for Ms. Crawford? Having nothing else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? Do I have a second? All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.